Good evening. This is City of Pleasantville, City Council working. Today's date is April 3rd, 2023 at 6:58 PM. Meeting has been duly advertised in the city's public information board, otherwise on Sunshine Mall, a roll call.
Davenport.
Present.
Davenport, here. Present.
Kamona.
Present.
Korea.
Present.
Mark Clay.
Present.
Sisra.
Present.
All of you.
I need to take a motion to approve for previous minutes. Motion. Second. Tom McCallum.
Bye.
Where are you at, President?
Thank you. Patrolman Malard. How are you? Patrolman Malard has been with us for 25 years and he is retiring. So we have a commendation for him, which I believe. City of Pleasantville, Office of Mayor, Certificate of Commendation. Whereas Patrolman Mark Malard has been a member of the Pleasantville Police Department since June 2003. And whereas Patrolman Malard was a county correctional officer beginning of February 1998 until June 2003. And whereas Patrolman Malard has held the position of Patrolman K-9 Officer, Detective, and most recently Administrative Officer. Patrolman Malard handled two police K-9s throughout his career. K-9 Mako and K-9 Briscoe. Assisting in thousands of calls requiring the use of K-9 assistance. And whereas Patrolman Malard is known for his strong sense of character and integrity. He is trusted by all who have the pleasure of working with him. Patrolman Malard has been a trusted member of the Pleasantville Police Department and has mentored many officers throughout his career. And now therefore I, Judy M. Ward, Mayor in the City of Pleasantville, New Jersey. On behalf of the City Council, this administration, and the citizens of Pleasantville. Do commend Patrolman Mark Malard for 25 years of law enforcement services. And pray for a healthy and rewarding retirement. And witness whereof I have set my hand and called the seal of the City of Pleasantville. To be affixed this third day of April in the year of our Lord 2023. Signed Judy M. Ward. You're welcome. Thank you for your years of service.
Thank you. It's my great honor.
Yes, thank you for all the years that you dedicated. And I just wish you a happy, healthy, fun, and well-lived retirement.
Excuse me.
Mr. Malard?
Yes, Mr. Malard. You have something to say? Councilor Harman wants to join in.
Mr. Malard, I wish you a happy, blessed retirement.
Thank you, ma'am.
I hope that you have something interesting to do because I know that you have a house full of people waiting for you to be home and have fun.
Thank you. Congratulations, man. Enjoy. Thank you, sir.
Congratulations. There's your retirement and thank you for your service.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for your services. Thank you, sir. Congratulations on your retirement. Thank you, sir. Thank you for your service and congratulations on your retirement. Thank you.
Yeah, just congratulations. Thank you for your years of dedication and I wish you a healthy, peaceful, happy retirement.
Yes, there's a presentation standing over here. Presentation by Kristen Ragland of Atlantic Care.
Good evening, everyone. So I first want to thank you all for the opportunity. I promised I would meet this. Quick, I want to thank Ms. Peyton, Mayor Ward for allowing me this space. I do want to bring you back some good news. So the last time I was here, I was talking about a program regarding employment. And so we had our first successful job fair, career fair, and I'm promising we had 53 people show up. So far, the number is at 20, have been hired into different roles. I was actually orientation today. We saw a couple of Pleasantville residents and some of your officers' children were even hired. So really excited. We're going to continue to do that. And I think also, Councilman McCallum and I, we talked. Ideal Institute, the program that I was sharing about the certification, health base, 10 have graduated. And there's another 10 that's starting next week. And so about four of them have already been guaranteed employment at Atlantic Care and we continue to go forward. But today is a little different. Today, I'm going to talk about something that I'm very passionate about since I've taken the role as Assistant Vice President of Diversity Equity and Inclusion at Atlantic Care. Health equity. Fair access for all. And one of the things that we have identified after looking at data from 2021 and 2022. Is that Pleasantville and Atlantic City has some disparities as pertains to hypertension, diabetes, and Medicare/Medicaid readmissions. If I can go a step further, we also have some opportunities with asthma and sickle cell anemia. So with that being said, after meeting with our clinical leadership over the past couple of months. I devised a plan to work specifically with the municipalities of Atlantic City and Pleasantville. And Ms. Peyton has agreed graciously to assist me with this work. And the thing that we're looking to do is work with you all and the entities in Pleasantville. To really create some interventions that's going to allow us to see the numbers get to a place where we can really show some metrics that show that we're making a difference. We can't have a community if it's not healthy. And so some of the things that we're talking about, the interventions, the compliance, are things that people may not know. I heard a stat, I was sharing this at the event on Saturday with Mayor Small. That 91% of all people don't know what their doctor told them when they left the doctor's office. That's a health literacy problem. And so if we have individuals in our community that don't feel that they have connections, resources to stay healthy. We will continue to see this disparity continue to increase. And so what we would like to do over the next two to three quarters in 2023. Is partner with you all, particularly the city, to find interventions, whether that's screenings, whether that's vaccinations, whether that's cancer screenings, and anything of that nature. We are going to target Pleasantville Housing Authority. And so we do have an event coming up in two weeks where we'll be there with a couple of Latino and African American and Asian employee resource group. Where they're going to be doing screenings, high blood pressure screenings, as well as bringing some doctors. The other secret weapon that we have is our medical residents. Atlantic Care has medical residents. These are individuals who have completed medical school. Who have been matched to Atlantic Care from different parts of the country or the world. And they come in and they do work in the hospital. But one of the things that they're passionate about is getting back into the community. And so the other thing is representation. We want to make sure that our healthcare providers and the communities see representation of who they are in the hospital sector. Right? And so that's why we're partnering with the municipalities so that we can connect the dots. Again, my goal is to see a healthier community. My goal is to work with municipalities to try to get rid of these silent killers. To also bring a cultural competency to the healthcare field so that we are not just telling people what to do. But we are working with them to do what they need to do to stay healthy. And so with that being said, I am going to leave a flyer. We have a nice little flyer that our marketing department created. I think I shared this with your business administrator. But we're going to be partnering and we'll put this out everywhere so that everyone in Pleasantville knows that health equity is our priority at Atlantic Care with the City of Pleasantville. So on top of the jobs that we're looking to create, on top of the education investment we're looking to create. We want to make sure that these individuals are living long enough to continue to pay their taxes. So that you all have a budget, right? But we want to make sure that they're living in a community that's going to thrive. So I thank you for your time, Council, Mayor Ward, Ms. Peyton. And I'm really excited about the beginning of this work and juncture to move City of Pleasantville forward as it pertains to health.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Are those interns that are getting back?
Those, yes, the residents. Yeah, they're medical residents. They have graduated from medical school. I have a gentleman, his name is Dr. Nadozie Maduka. He's from Baltimore, Booby State University. And he has been my clinical partner. And he is, he couldn't make it tonight because he's on rotation tonight. But he has been the clinical partner that I've had with our Diversity Equity Inclusion Council to make sure that people understand what we're talking about. We had an event last week with the City of Atlantic City and our brand new Medical Arts Pavilion. By the way, which hopefully I can set up a day where all of you, I can invite you all to that $30 million facility that we just broke ground on last year. Because I want you to see what we're trying to do as pertains to either maternal fetal medicine and infant mortality. That we know with our Black and Brown communities suffer the most disparity and even our pediatric wing. But up there is also medical residents that are doing their training. And so I would like you all to come check it out. So you can see it. It's three floors and we're working with all of our community members to show. But the medical residents are the ones that are helping us with the outreach work. Yes, I sure do. I came prepared this time. I even wore my badge to let you know I'm a real employee at Atlantic Care.
Excuse me, Sir Ratt. Are you looking to have any more doctors come in to speak? Or are you saying you have doctors that come in?
Yes, we, so part of this is, one of the things we want to do is look for places that will allow me to bring the team to do education. So whether that's a faith-based organization, whether it's the housing authority, even a city council meeting or this platform. But the key is education. Because again, what we're seeing is people want to be healthy, but they don't know what to do to stay healthy. They may not understand the jargon that they hear in the doctor's office and, you know, what is lipid control and things like that. But you know, one of the things we saw when Dr. Maduka shared his education, he broke it down so plainly. That people said, oh, that's what they're talking about. So that lets me know that we really have to look at health literacy. And I'm not a clinician by any stretch of the imagination. But what I am passionate about is making sure people understand to the simplest terms how to live and live healthy.
You know what else is, sometimes it's all on the doctor that you have. I've been with my doctor before. I was 23 when I met him. I'm 63 now, so it's been 40 years. And this guy is amazing. As a matter of fact, I just today had to go look at all my results from him. And I understand what my PSA means, even those things that are really important to a man, especially, you know, your prostate. So like you said, understanding the numbers and the information that they're giving you is very important.
Perfect example, right? So one of the things we were looking at, I'm particularly looking at. The screenings 10 years ago used to say 50. When you turn 50, get your ring. But they have changed. It could be 40 now. And if we don't know, you have people who are getting to it last minute. And that's when we start seeing people who are suffering. Or the other thing, you know, going back to workforce development. Benefits, you know, having, you know, benefits that you go to your primary care doctor. I saw a stat that particularly in an area, one of our local municipalities, within the first 4,000 units, only 300 people had a primary care provider. That's a problem. Because then you use the emergency room as your doctor's office and it's too late. The other thing is that we, you know, and I share this story sometimes. That when I turned 18 and I went to college and I came home, I never forget, I came home with an eye injury from playing football. And I went to my pediatrician who politely told me, get out. As I was sitting in the little tight house, he said, you're 18, you need a primary care provider. How many kids, when they graduate high school because they think they're healthy, don't have a primary care provider? So things are underlying that are high blood pressure, diabetes, things that they couldn't control, we wait to the last minute. So it's important that we have this conversation earlier and we don't miss these opportunities to build barriers against those disparities. So I agree, if we can get some education, we have a lot of people. You know, Lori Herden, who is retiring sadly on my apartment, you know, we've developed this plan. And Dr. Mamadou, who is a medical doctor, along with Mary Law, who's a nurse, who's leading this work with me. Are very passionate about getting to you all and to the municipalities so we can begin to see where we can take some of this help stuff back.
Yeah, I applaud you. You're making ahead of the curve. So we're here on the front end of solving a possible problem as opposed to chasing it.
Absolutely. And we're your partners. So we're not going away. At least they didn't tell me. Absolutely, absolutely. There's an extra one?
Mark Clay.
Oh, oh, yeah, my Facebook friends. Thank you all.
Do you have any more cards yet?
Yeah, you know, can I have all of your cards if you have it? If not, I can email you all and we can connect. Yeah, I'll do that. You all listen. Thank you.
Question, sir. Yes, I thank you too because it's so important for everyone to be educated. And when, one Saturday, when you said that about the 91% not knowing, that's so true. Whatever the doctor says is possible, you know, and no one ever questions it. The other thing that we'd like in Pleasantville is urgent care.
I'm working on it. Wait, I'm on public record. I won't say nothing. We want infrastructure. As you all know, we have John Brooks now as a part of Atlantic Care, even though that infrastructure has always been there. But John Brooks now is under Atlantic Care. So we're looking at all infrastructure to provide, you know, care. And you know, I would love to see as much as we can build in the City of Pleasantville. Because I think we have such a diverse opportunity with the diversity of Pleasantville, the City of Pleasantville, working with, you know, our Latino community, our Asian community, African American community, and everyone. Health equity is access for all. So that's what we believe at Atlantic Care.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks so much. Take care.
Okay, special agenda is orders number four. Second reading, public hearing will be held during regular session. Authorizing a special emergency appropriate appropriations pursuant to NJSA 40:4-53 for the purpose of funding severance liabilities due under existing employment contracts. And authorizing the issuance of special emergency notes to fund the same.
Any questions?
Next is orders number five, first reading, exceed the municipal budget appropriation limits and to establish a campaign.
Any questions?
Resolution 61 proclaiming the month of April as autism awareness month.
Any questions?
Resolution 62 authorizing the certification of compliance with the United States EEO Commission's enforcement guidance on the consideration of arrests and conviction records and employment decisions under Title VII of Civil Rights Act of 1964. Next is resolution 63 introducing the 2023 budget.
Questions?
Resolution 64 granting approval of a bizarre fashion show in the city on May 13th from 11:00 AM to 4:00 at the Martin Luther King Avenue.
Any questions?
Resolution 65 adopting the policy of first choice, first opportunity for the employment of city residents and contracting and purchasing from city-based businesses for redevelopment projects undertaken with the city.
Certainly. Actually, this is a planned redevelopment item. And this item also went through, I think, discussion, Council meeting, prayer. There was a strong discussion about any time that the city gets involved in any type of economic redevelopment. That we would have a policy in place to make sure that any investors or redevelopers would have either a community benefits agreement available. Or they would look to the first choice to any resolution for diabetes, making sure that Pleasantville is first.
Next is review of the papers.
Evening. I'd like to go over the bill that we paved between this council meeting and this council meeting. And once at the bottom of page one, where it transfers, you'll see the payroll health benefits for both active and retirees. And then the voluntary trust company, $40,000 in interest from a bond from 2014. We go in the bill, we're getting to approval to pay this time. We go to page number one. You see Dell Inc., $6,000 for a new part of our server, a software that's needed for to run the payroll system. There we go to page two, Stagman, Dan Bowman and Company, first draw for the 2002 audit. This is a total audit, it's around $55,000, first draw. We've been working on the budget. They've already done annual financial statement. They've done the annual debt statement. And they're working on completing the audit. And this is the first draw. We go to page three. Near the bottom, we see ESO solution. This is software for the fire department for the management of all their times and runs and everything that they need to make the fire department operate in a more efficient manner. Page four, three quarters of the way down, Mike's Driving School. We've talked before about we send people to CDL licenses. The cost was $20,000. We're being reversed half that by the county, which has already been done. So the net cost was $10,000 to have five CDL drivers on the staff. And I believe that of all of the unusual items, there's the ability to run the city on a basis, oh, sorry. We go to page six. Fourthment asked to alter the year over the door. This door now three for the fire department. Two have already been completed. We're working on a third one. In probably about three weeks, we'll work on the fourth one. We did this on a progression basis rather than go all at one time. They thought it would be easier and cheaper for us to do them. That way they're not shutting down the entire fire department before they're done. So we're doing it on a weekly, every bi-weekly basis. And that should be all the other bills or bill we need to run efficiently as we can.
Have they looked at all of the other doors? You're talking about the doors at the fire department, that's the one.
Correct.
On the end, I mean, right above with the tile and shingles and everything is all broken out. So no water is leaking into it. I had asked you guys about this even about a year ago. Has anything been looked at or a price been given?
We're playing at the fire department?
Looking right at the fire department, up to your left, right above you.
Yeah, we have, part of the program we're looking to do for, if we do any bonding this year, is to fix the exterior of the fire department. Roofing that, both the roof and the roof department, some other areas that we see are neglected. And we need to, the cost, enough for the fire department, I think the roof was like $70,000. The tile, I don't remember what that was, the roof for the fire department and police department was like half a million dollars. So these are money that if we do borrow, to fix these things, we have to find it for it. But we are looking at.
Thank you very much. On page three, bill with the press. What's the month beginning, month ending?
Which one?
The one for the press.
The press?
Yeah.
That is, their bills from 2022 that they sent email, they stopped sending things through mail. They sent an email and it went into spam file. And so we were able to, finally, after they called us, we were able to pull it out of spam. I think they go back to like September of '22. They just kept 10 bills, it went through the spam file. We never saw them.
So we didn't know that we owe them money?
Did the bill, they returned to the clerk's office? Oh, we knew them. I can't say we didn't know, but normally when we get a bill from the press, it's generated a purchase order recognition. If we don't get a bill, I mean, we send, we send things out all the time. And I guess it could have been neglect on some one part that we didn't generate a purchase order. And we would start paying it. But we don't really know what your cost is until they actually send the bill.
My office gets the bill and I have my staff handling it alone myself. So while seeing the bill, it doesn't cause, it doesn't cause us to really act on it until we get it. I got an email requiring on telling us, and it's other entities, other offices that all sent out publication. So it was sent out via email and I didn't receive them. So they forwarded off the bill for us to get on it. I think it was, that's why it's the month that it is. Now that we know, we have put it in a removed from the spam list. And so now I will get them directly.
Questions?
I see, I see you have citywide tolling.
Citywide tolling?
Yeah, citywide tolling. It's a tolling there for 8.28.
These are cards that the police department have towed for one reason or another.
I'm wondering, you know, maybe it's a long-distance tolling or, you know what I mean, because it's 8.28, all the rest of them is 300, 3.25.
It's probably a number of towing.
A number of tows together?
I don't have the exact number, but these are, again, these are generated, request generated from police department. And once they send everything over, we will process the payment.
So excuse me, I'm glad you asked that question because I saw that earlier. So that's not a bill that goes to the owner of the vehicle?
No, because what will happen if I give away a loan in a vehicle? Or they will pay fine and then it'll be part of the revenue that we generate for it. A lot of times, like I think, Council, they're abandoned vehicles.
Okay, okay.
That we really don't know who they go out to. We may be looking for VIN number, but they're probably wrong on. They may not even be, have VIN number on them anymore anyway.
I just thought it was like a truck, yeah, old car, came up that much.
Exactly.
Barry, did you trigger something the other day when you were here? What's that told?
It's over there.
That explanation from that just triggered something by the second one.
We have, in the current fund, our total debt is 9.7, I'm sorry, 9.2 million dollars. That's for current fund, which is general operations. Firehouse, vehicles we buy for the police department and for the department. For the sewer, it is 7.9. 7.9 million. Now, out of that, a million and a half has not been borrowed yet. Back in 2022, Hattaway authorized us to borrow 4 million. We didn't borrow 4 million. We borrowed 2 and 1/2. So when the auditors do an annual debt statement, report it to the state, they have to include what's authorized as well as what has been borrowed. If we want to, if we want to take that 1.5 out, that's fine. It'll bring it down to 6.4. I mean, it is, what we authorized, because we thought what we needed at that time was 4 million. We only borrowed 2 and 1/2 because we didn't need it at that time. Why pay interest on money? We don't need it at that time. So we decided just to borrow 2 and 1/2. But the auditors have to include that in the annual debt statement. Now, if you look at the annual debt statement, I give you copies, I'll email copies of it. Our debt is 1.1% of our assessed value. We are allowed to borrow up to 3 and 1/2% of our assessed value. We have $9 million of current fund debt. In theory, we could go up to almost $30 million. Obviously, we don't want to do that. We try to keep things as low as possible and tight as possible. As Councilman Davenport asked about the time for the fire department. The cost is in the area where you have to borrow. And we're trying, we're trying not to do that. You got half a million dollar roof for, for a police department. And if we ever do that, it's going to come out of bond. You got to borrow for it. Fire department, it's the other fire truck. We're looking at $900,000 debt. That's something we have to borrow for. You know, I don't like to put us in debt any more than anybody else does. But if you want to have things that work, that aren't a problem child. The fire department will have new, two of the fire trucks have a reserve over 20-year bolt. It's not more. We have to be efficient in what we do. And we have to be prudent in how we borrow. I mean, we don't, we don't borrow every year. Maybe every two years. Because we try and keep debt as low as possible. I know you guys all have been turning about it. Administration's all concerned about it. We borrow what we have to and that's it.
Yes, is this including the 2.5 that's on the agenda tonight?
No, that's, because of the way it is set up, it is not considered debt to us. Even because it's paid all over four years, it's short-term debt. But it's not included. When we do that calculation for a statement, that 1.1, that's not included. That's set aside. It's a special type of emergency that we need to pay off our obligations.
Next is the public portion. Anyone from the public. I'm going to send up, I will jump up, I will hold it and forward.
Good evening, everyone. Olivia Paul. Well, we have
Olivia Paul Well, you have the question. And then I have to pick it. I have a question on ordinance number five. I just need an explanation since number one. Tonight it passed to exceed the municipal budget appropriation limits. I wanted to know what they are and to establish a cap bank. I wasn't sure what that was and exceed by how much. So I guess that's three questions.
The cap bank is. Yeah, please, please. We are allowed to raise debt every year 20% based on state regulations. Anytime we don't raise it by two and a half, we put money aside. Like for example, if last year we were allowed to raise $600,000, we only raised $300,000. We take that 300 and put it into what we call the cap bank to use another time. Like this year, because of the increases in state health costs, increases in pension costs, we've had to use some of 2022 money to bring it into, in order to balance the budget for 2023.
And that's in this cap?
That's in that cap bank.
Okay.
We have another, probably another $500,000 in the cap bank to use. We have to use it, you can't use it beyond two years. So money in the cap bank from '21 will disappear.
Is that number included in the debt or that's?
No.
Okay.
We're allowed to raise it, but we didn't.
Okay. And I had one other question, which was number seven. I don't know if this is you or not. Adopting a policy of first choice. Sounds like a really good program, but my question is, and I did have a conversation with our mayor one time about this. So many of our minority contractors don't qualify for the ability to participate because they haven't fulfilled whatever the requirements are at the state. So my question is, will the city or has the state set up any programs to help minority contractors? So they would be eligible to apply for a program such as this?
Great, I know, not at this time. We don't have any, we're training.
Well, I think when we look at this, this specific resolution where we coordinated local contractors, a lot of our local contractors are minority contractors. And in the past, under our UEZ program, we have within the city created programming where our local or minority, which could be, you know, loving owned businesses that would come in. We would set up specific training where those local contractors would group together and bid together for projects. So that is not something that is not out of the rents of the city. That is something that we can do as we look at each project. So I think this is why we kind of labeled it local contractors, so that would, you know, include everyone.
And you'll advertise for the town. You'll be advertising for the town.
Yeah, so we'll look at when the project becomes available that they would fit into. Then we'll talk about that, that marketing and how to reach out to them accordingly. It hasn't been set up yet, but we've done it in the past and I know that we can improve on it. It's something that we've talked about often that we would consider doing again.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Do we have any?
Should more questions still?
Yeah.
A lesson protected.
Yeah, did, yeah. Do we have any numbers associated with the people who are associated or inclusive in the UEZ? And how many actually live in the city of Pleasantville that are employees of companies that are in UEZ that have employed people that live here? Which is what we're trying to get them to do was to hire people from Pleasantville, Kirk.
Absolutely. So the state UEZ program is now, at one time, under the old law, we monitored that specifically. When the UEZ funds were reallocated back to the state, which they have been under the new law as well. The state certifies all of your local businesses. And under that state certification program, there is a renewal form or a tracking form that each business must sign that tells how many residents within a municipality or UEZ municipality is employed within the, within the business. And the, and the reason why they track that is because those UEZ incentives, it's based on the number of employees that are within that business. So the state currently tracks that. I'm certainly we can get, I'm certain that we can get our hands on it, but we don't have that information at hand like we used to in the past. But the state does track that.
I have another. Who, who wrote this resolution? Is it generated through the city or is it?
Our attorney.
Only because. Which attorney? Because.
Are you Mr. Pocanback?
Yeah, it, it, the, it's the last, the second to the last paragraph in the, in the last sentence. It says, and cooperate with all efforts by the urban enterprise zone to encourage. And it's talking about companies coming in that might get short-term and long-term tax exemptions. The word encourage is kind of mousy. We encourage you to, like, could we put a little bit more oomph behind that encourage?
Well, I think what's going to back us up.
Mandatory this.
I understand, but what's going to back us up to support this resolution is the community benefits agreement. Right? So I think that's where your need lives to make sure that they are totally invested in a way that they should. This is just basically saying, hey, we have this policy in place. We probably will not even potentially want to partner with you if you're not going to consider these things that are here. And then what, you know, signs the deal was that community benefits agreement. So that's where the, the need is, Jolaine. This is a document just simply saying that we have a policy and then the specifics of what we want that individual company to do will live in their community benefits agreement.
Because to go along with that, it says strong emphasis, which that's another one that's like.
Yeah, that is strong emphasis. Yeah, we're in our community benefits agreement. That's specifically tell them what you desire.
Okay, but that's the language in the community benefit. And it says that.
No, the community benefits agreement is not here.
But it, it says that strong emphasis on the utilization, units dead, of local businesses on their projects and employ demonstrable efforts to achieve such goals, including without limitations, participation in outreach programs, education, and assistance to businesses not familiar with those types of projects. And encourage of local residents to participate in such projects from programs and procedures jointly developed to prepare and encourage local residents for apprenticeships and formal employment. The other one says it encourages all redevelopment to financially support community-based activities, which is the CAB, right? That just says encourages.
No, we, we, I think we can kind of.
Can we just make sure we get the air?
And, and a note to your original question as to the drafting of the language, this is actually mimic from the document under UEZ that was approved by the UEZ zone some years ago. So I don't think that much of the wording has been changed.
I just want to make sure that they understand.
When you do your community benefits agreement, that's where you gotta have.
So.
That's just my.
So we haven't done a community benefits agreement yet, have we?
We are working on.
Okay, that's what I'm asking. Okay, good. All right. All right, back to.
I mean, this is important. I just have a question for Madam Solicitor. Were you seeing during this? No, I, I received it in the package with everyone else, but I did review it. It's, it's permissive and I don't think it could be mandatory. And that's probably why the administrator is talking about the community benefits package. So it's really a nudge to the developers. You can't force anyone into UEZ. You can't, you know, I mean, you can't force them to necessarily hire local people. It's private industry, especially when they're not going, using public tax dollars and they're not bidding on anything. So it's really just trying to get them involved subliminally saying, hey, we're going to look at you versus looking at someone else. If you're not willing to, to look at the citizens of Pleasantville, the residents of Pleasantville first. That's what I took away from it, right? But I, I was not involved in it.
Anyone else from the public?
My name is Kathleen State and I live in Lindwood. And I wanted to go back to the work session since we're discussing ordinance number five and specifically exceeding the municipal budget appropriation that we mentioned to establish a cap bank. As it was brought forth by your business administrator, there's currently about $500,000 in this cap bank right now. I believe if I'm correct, if I heard them correctly, it came from 2021 to 2022. So you're currently looking at, according to the ordinance, increasing the cap bank. Usually you do 2.5, but we're looking at 3.5 if I'm correct on that. And you're looking at an amount of $997,000. That's a big difference between 2.5 and 3.5. So I'm curious as to, do you have to delineate in your ordinance language what that cap bank is going to be spent on? Out of the existing cap bank.
Just keep that bank.
Okay, so you can go back and do your. So you're, you're saying that for ordinance number five, you're currently going to take out $285,000 out of the existing cap bank of that $500,000.
$500,000.
Okay, all right. But I thought this ordinance was also to establish the cap bank for fiscal year 2023. And if you look a little further down in the language, there's a $997,000 amount in there. Is that in addition?
No, that is, the 284 makes up part of 996 and we have to increase the budget this year.
Okay.
So we're increasing budget 600 plus thousand from '23 and we're taking 284. That's in the '21 and '22 cap bank money to make up the 996.
Okay. So, so, all right, so to recap what you're saying, I understand. So you're saying at the end of fiscal year 2023, you hope to have 997,000 in there?
997,000 is a matter of the largest increase for this year.
Okay, for this year.
For this year, explains. That's what we're increasing the operation budget.
Okay. So how much of that would be coming from the cap bank?
284,000.
284,000. Okay, great, thank you very much. That's helpful. Once you take this money and put it, the 284,000 in the cap bank, it does talk about if it's not needed in fiscal year 2023's budget, it can be carried over for up to two years. So when it's carried over up to two years, does your business administrator then come to you in the council and get approval to expend that money?
No, that, the cap bank, you know, you can spend for, also at the budget. This is what we're doing this year. We're taking 284,000 that could have been raised in '21, couldn't have raised in '22, but was not. So we're usually get to raise the budget this year, in '23. So there's no, that money, money, it was considered the availability to increase your, increase the budget by 284,000 because you could have increased it in '21, you could have increased it in '22, you never did. So that money you don't increase, you set aside to increase another time.
So then you take that money and you mentioned this earlier. So you can use that cap bank money to fund general operating budget versus capital expenditures?
We're not funding anything with a cap bank.
Okay.
What we're doing, we're allowed, the cap bank allows the city to increase the budget.
Okay.
Because above and beyond a two and a half percent.
Okay.
We're increasing one additional one percentage to 284,000 in order to have a balanced budget for the city. We're not having any kind of layoffs. And we've got the budget down to as tight as we can get.
So I know we're jumping the gun because we're talking about ordinance five and in the general meeting tonight, there's going to be an introduction to the 2023 budget. But I'm curious to know and have a question is, if you increase the cap bank, what impact does that have on the property taxes in the city to make up that difference?
We're not, we're, we're, we're looking at two, we're comparing averages.
Okay.
The cap bank is not money. There's not money anywhere. The cap bank allows you the ability to raise money. Okay, what we, like I said, in '21 and '22, we raised our budget probably one and a half to two percent. We could have raised it to two and a half percent. The money, the difference between what we did raise it and what we could raise it goes into a bank to be used later. We can use that money over two years. '21 and '22, we used in '23. '22 money, we used in '24, '23 money, if there's any carry, carry over. The budget that we're bringing in the cap bank in order to raise the budget beyond the two and a half percent that state allows us, they were allowed to raise another one percent. If we had fun from prior years, go to go cap bank money to raise for another, another time. There's no cash anywhere. It's just the ability for city council to raise funds to balance the budget.
I, I understand there's no. Never mind, through you. Thank you, sorry. I, I understand that there's no.
No, um, three minutes, you're packed.
Oh, okay. I'll come back and ask the rest of them later. Thank you.
Anyone else from the public?
Urban Ryan Rodriguez, resident Pleasantville, New Jersey. So I just want to ask with ordinance number four, ordinance number five.
Can you say your name for the record?
Sorry, Urban Ryan Rodriguez. For ordinance four, ordinance number five, will that have any impact on real estate taxes for the residents in Pleasantville? Will we raise any of our taxes? Could I just get some clarification on that?
I'm sorry, another question?
Where am I comparing averages?
Okay.
To increase, ordinance number four, ordinance number five.
Order number four is not just taxes here.
What about ordinance number five?
Where ordinance number five allows us to raise. We, we're allowed to raise additional money from the cap bank. Otherwise, we have a budget, it would be $284,000 out of balance. And our revenue would, our best would far exceed $284,000 of revenue, which would require salary lapse. So it will be, it would, because we have the ability to raise, raise the tax yet, we'll increase your taxes.
It will increase your taxes. Do you know by how much cents per?
Well, every, every $80,000 is probably about. Maybe six cents?
Six cents.
Five or six cents.
Thank you. Thank you.
Four or five cents.
Four or five cents. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Anyone else from the public?
Steve Young, and here on behalf of National Action Network. And this is a good moment. I know sometimes you see me say, here come trouble. Good trouble at that. I just want to, you know, say, you know, I'm here because National Action Network, we have an hour annual convention. It's free and it's up in New York. And it's going to be.
That's, we've been chatting the items on.
I can't wait that moment. I'll wait, but I just wanted to come here tonight and invite you.
Yeah.
So I was to say that. I was so anxious to get it out.
Keep that thing.
It was good news. Do you have a fly? I don't know, but I could email them.
Anyone else from the public? Anything most important about the portion? Motion second. Discussion, discussion, council.
I do. Nothing.
I'll take the portion to close the public. Motion second.
This side favor.
Hi.
Good evening. This is the City of Pleasantville, City Council, regular meeting. Today's date, it's April 3rd, 2023.
The date is April 3, 2023, the time is 7:28 PM. This meeting has been duly advertised in the city's newspaper, performance with open public meeting night, otherwise known as the Sunshine Law. Please stand for impatience and respect. How far are we? How many, how many, how many come out? I want to be on, on our, as this has given us a say. They have some trust plans, to maybe give those some trust plans against us. They may fight off the two education, just a different issue than people. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible and liberty which has its own.
Davenport.
President.
Fidel Arum.
Here.
Thomas.
Present.
Camona.
Present.
Korea.
Present.
Barclay.
Present.
Sistrum.
Present.
Let's say the motion, the special, the reading.
Motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Pass out your presidential papers.
Okay, first on the agenda is ordinance number four, public hearing required. Second reading, authorizing a special emergency appropriation pursuant to NJSA 40:4-53 for the purpose of funding severance liabilities due under existing forming contracts and authorizing the issuance of special emergency notes to fund the same.
Any questions? Questions from the public, open to the public. Second reading. Motion.
Motion.
Motion to close the public hearing. Second.
Second.
All in favor?
And let's say the motion, close the.
Motion.
Second.
Rokal Davenport.
Yes.
Fidel Arum.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Camona.
Yes.
Korea.
Yes.
Barclay.
Yes.
Sistrum.
Yes.
Ordinance adopted. Ordinance number five, first reading, exceed the municipal budget appropriation limits and to establish a cap bank.
Any questions? Let's say a motion.
Motion.
Second.
Rokal Davenport.
Yes.
Fidel Arum.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Camona.
Yes.
Korea.
Yes.
Barclay.
Yes.
Sistrum. Ordinance holds a second reading scheduled for May the 1st. Resolution 61, proclaim the month of April as Autism Awareness Month.
Motion.
Second.
Rokal Davenport.
Yes.
Fidel Arum.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Camona.
Yes.
Korea.
Yes.
Barclay.
Yes.
Sistrum. Resolution approved. Resolution 62, authorizing the certification of compliance with the United States EEO commissions that enforcement guidelines on the consideration of arrest and conviction records and employment decisions under Title VII of the Civil Rights Act of 1964.
Motion.
Second.
Rokal Davenport.
Yes.
Camo, Fidel Arum.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Camona.
Yes.
Korea.
Yes.
Barclay.
Yes.
Sistrum.
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution 63, introducing the 2023 budget.
Motion.
Second.
Rokal Davenport.
Yes.
Fidel Arum.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Camona.
Yes.
Korea.
Yes.
Barclay.
Yes.
Sistrum.
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution 64, granting. Resolution 64, granting approval of a bizarre fashion show in the city on May the 13th, location of the King Boulevard.
Motion, second.
Rokal Davenport.
Yes.
Fidel Arum.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Camona.
Yes.
Korea.
Yes.
Barclay.
Yes.
Sistrum.
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution 65, adopting a policy of first choice, first opportunity for the deployment of city residents contracting and purchasing from city-based businesses for redevelopment projects undertaken with the city.
Motion, second.
Rokal Davenport.
Yes.
Fidel Arum.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Camona.
Yes.
Korea.
Yes.
Barclay.
Yes.
Sistrum.
Yes.
Resolution approved. I need a motion approved, billlets.
Motion, second.
Rokal Davenport.
Yes.
Fidel Arum.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Camona.
Yes.
Korea.
Yes.
Barclay.
Yes.
Sistrum.
Yes.
Motion approved. Next is public portion.
Next is public portion, anyone from the public with a statement? Three minutes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Rest of the town, 300 South Chester Avenue, in the great city of Pleasantville, New Jersey. Mr. President, I rise to commit second time commendation to contractor, to committee that had just about looked like completed the work on Anthony Boulevard. It looks like Williamsburg, Virginia, in colonial times, those lovely lights.
You weren't there then? Go ahead, go ahead.
I come in to work. I come in to hold county, because that's the way we want it to look, okay? A second item is on the third side because my city administrator is working on, you know, the railroads take the time doing things or whatever, and she knows already. So Ed Chestnut and the Blackwood Pike, and where their train comes across, that rusty work, and that, we got to do something about it. It's what I saw, and, and I know you're working on it, but tonight I offer you will accept, but we do have a, a group of limited men, plenty of men who love the beautification of the city and it's plentiful in large. If you get to paint, we will paint. But that rusty spot, I'm sure some of you have seen it. It, it just, it touches every time I go through and back, right there at Kermit on the Blackwood Pike, and when a train comes across, and that big old rusty spot. So I, I talked to my city administrator, and she's working on it, and in time I think we will take care of it. But again, I, I rise as a, a prize, proud taxpayer because you guys are doing a, a tremendous job. You really are. My chief is not here tonight, but the crime is down. And I'm hearing nothing but nice things about my dear city. I'm Pleasantville, proud of you guys, keep up the good work. And we're going to raise the image of a, of an county. Thank you.
Second. Mr., Mr. Kurea, do you want to talk about that? You want to speak, talk about that?
About the bridge, the overpass? Yeah, he knows that's something I'm, I'm not going to let it go, so. We're talking about the, the overpass.
Yeah, if you allow me, I know this is an honest work for everyone. We were having our challenge with identifying the responsible party. Our solicitor has given us the contact information of the responsible party. That information has been shared with our construction office, and information is being forwarded to the responsible party as it relates to summons for them to actually address the issues there.
On this, Kathleen?
Yeah. My name is Kathleen Spade, I live in Linwood. Want to go back to resolution number 63, introducing the 2023 budget. I'm here for that tonight, and all you did was just read the resolution out loud? That's interesting. When I went to the Linwood council meeting two weeks ago, not only did they read the resolution out loud, but they gave us an update so that we would know that our taxes unfortunately need to go up three cents on every $100,000 value of our homes. And they also gave an overhead and slides, and then in turn, a copy of the budget for people to take a look at. So I need to ask, I know this is the public comment session time, but when can the public who live in Pleasantville, who are going to be impacted by the increase, because it's just been brought up, that there's going to be an increase in their taxes between four and five cents based on $80,000 value of their home? When can they expect to see a copy of the budget?
It's pretty stupid. It's, the four, four, five cents is just because the increase from the cap bank.
Do you want to speak?
The four or five cents, we're forced, that's what it will be. It's just because the increase from the cap bank. We're looking at about a 14 cent increase in our taxes, unfortunately, because of $900,000 from the store, in terms of medical, increase from state, and over $400,000 for pensions from state, things that we can't control. That's the reason we're having an increase. Without those numbers in there, we would have a decrease this year. We, we need a cap bank. We would be much, we'd probably be minus six cent reduction.
Since it's the public competition, I didn't need to hand the mic to him to offend you all with the procedure. So I'm asking the question is, when will this budget will be made available for the public to look at, and where can they find it? Before the next reading, which takes place on, I believe, May 1st? Can I correct on this?
Just next one.
Probably going to be available in the clerk's office. It's available tomorrow, in the clerk's office, hard copies. It will also be available on our website tomorrow. And it's published, it will be published in the paper on April 20th.
Okay.
And the public hearing, four questions and answers will be at the public hearing for the budget, which is scheduled for May 20th.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Steve Young, and again, I'm here on behalf of Reverend Al Sharpton, the founder of the National Action Network. I'm the president, and we have an office right across the street here in the good to be named as a Pleasantville. But I'm here to invite you all, because National Action Network, not only we demonstrate, we negotiate, and we legislate. And that means we help make laws, following up with what Dr. Martin Luther King stood for. Not only when it comes to police brutality and different things like that, laws for voting rights, and it's, it's about equality and form, different things. A lot of people don't have two places, too many places to go. The acts will help, and some of you may need help one day, or some advocacy, and we are, we are willing to be there on your behalf, because even municipalities need help sometimes. So we're here to invite you to attend our free National Action Network, and it's going to be held April 12th through the 15th at the Sheraton Hotel in New York in Times Square. And you can go to www.nationalactionnetwork.net to sign up, it's actually free. And when you register, just put our name down. You've heard from it from National Action Network, South Jersey Tech. Some of the things we're going to be having there is the keeper's of the drain tower, Perry. We will be honoring him, so you can actually meet him, talk to him, whatnot. We're going to have Carmella Harris, who's on the phone, actually going to be speaking there at our convention. And again, this is all free and open to the public. So those are just some of the things on the website, you see the entire schedule. And I just want to invite you personally, to, for you all and the community to come out. Don't cost you nothing, but the change is to get there.
Where's your conference?
Excuse me?
Where's your conference?
In New York, in Sheraton Hotel, New York. And the address is 8117 Haven.
I'm sure there's even information.
And I heard that you were supplying transportation and everything. We're working on that, matter of fact, since you're running up, we're responsible. We'll pay for youth that can make, you know, because sometimes youth want to come, some people want to stay overnight, whatnot, and transportation. So anything, all these businesses, the community benefits program, that's what it's all about with the community partnership. I'm just throwing that out there, throwing it in there. But I just want to thank you all, and if anything can do with the debt, I think we have some solutions for some of your debt. And it's another way you can decrease that debt. And we looking forward to working with you on that, as well as the community benefits program, if you feel so. It's free information, don't cost you a thing, and, you know, knowledge is powerful, but we have to work together and know about it, but do it. Thank you very much.
Thanks for having me.
Let's say a motion, close the.
Motion.
All in favor? Aye. Let's have it. Now we have, now we have council mayor, council mayor.
Good evening, everyone, I'd just like to thank you all for coming out tonight, and have a good evening.
Thank you all for coming out.
Thanks very much for supporting the government of the city, for your attendance, thank you very much.
Thank you everybody for coming out, everybody have a blessed and safe Easter. Just want to say congratulations to all, so they're just retired. And God bless you, I think.
I saw the Easter Bunny early on Saturday. I saw the Street Sweeper today. And I don't know which one I was like more amazed at, the Easter Bunny or the Street Sweeper, but after we got done, the streets looked, Main Street looked wonderful. Ansley Boulevard looks like a boulevard should, it's beautiful. And the egg hunt at the rec center on Saturday was, I think I probably had as much fun and not more than any kid that was out there. And I, it was a good job that the rec center did.
The piggyback off of councilwoman Fidel Arum. The Easter egg hunt was a great success. They had over, what was it, over 1,508. It probably was close to maybe 100 kids or?
Maybe.
It was short, but.
It was a confusion with the rain.
Yeah, but it was well attended, yes. So I want to say congratulations once again to the rec center.
Hope you have any comments?
Everyone have a great Easter, and God bless the city. Take a motion to, in Jersey. Motion, second. All in favor? Aye, 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 that's it.